Hi there, I'm Erica Brown. I am the editor of the Manchester Cricket and welcome to the 2025 Meet the Candidates Forum for Manchester by the Seas Planning Board Race. It is a contested race and we have four candidates who are running for three slots that are open on the planning board. And what we're going to do today is have a format where we're going to allow them to[35.86][35.86]introduce themselves and then we're going to have a series of three questions that we have shared with them ahead of time. We do that so that it is fair to everybody and even-handed. We also do it because we are taping this with 1623 Studios, Cape Ann Television's, our Cape Ann Public Access Television Partner, and we should thank them for this and we should thank this school for allowing us to use this lovely auditorium. And because of that, people are going to see this later and we want them to have a worthy experience when they see it and not, you know, sit around and listen to people cognate over a question that I just surprised them with. So that's what we're going to do and then we're going to pivot into a time period where we'll open it up to the audience for questions. And I will pass around a microphone and you can ask, so there you go. So I'd like to introduce everybody on the far end, Gordon Brewster. Then we have Sandy Bodmer Turner, Brian Frey.
Frey.
Frey, Frye, Frye, Brian Frye. And Sandy Rogers, who by the way, I always refer to Sandy as Sandy Rogers 82 Old Essex Road. And people who attend meetings will know what that is referring to. So anyway, welcome and thank you very much. Let's get into it. We'll start by asking people to just introduce themselves and take the same amount of time, roughly. If you hear the well-placed "uh-huh," that's because you've hit your time and I'd like you to please give somebody else a turn. So why don't we start alphabetically, which that means Gordon Brewster, you're going to start? Oh, you need to press the button and speak in. It's both for amplification and so that 1623. You press the button. Technical difficulties already.
Can you hear now?
There we go, there we go.
Well, hi, thank you all for coming. My name's Gordon Brewster. I have been, just a brief bio about me living in Manchester here. I came here 40 years ago with my two-bye wife at that point and we have now lived here for 40 years. I have two sons, both educated here in Manchester and moved on since. A little bit about my career, I should say, I should say that I was a kid, a kid growing up in Beverly and I always wanted to live in Manchester. So after I left New York City and Donna left Chicago, we came to Manchester to create our family and here we are still. So my profession, I'm a registered professional civil engineer. I've been practicing for 40 years. My job throughout those 40 years was as a project manager of architectural engineering teams and in the design and construction and planning, design and construction of a diverse type of building size. I did office buildings, I did manufacturing facilities, even did a military facility. I've done housing, I've even done some retail facilities too. So it was actually quite a rewarding career, one that I really enjoyed, one that I, one that I actually kind of hated to leave. So my particular role in this, if I may just speak briefly about that, my particular role was to understand everything about the project from the outset. And that involves particularly on the planning and programming side of it. That was very important. And as it went through, I stayed engaged in the project from the outset of the project all the way to construction. Even in a project manager role, I felt the need to stay engaged because I knew the most about it. Manchester, my Manchester involvement, that started, that started 25 years ago and I thought I had skills, both the technical skills and the managerial skills, to aid in the design on building of the school buildings. I was involved in the first building, the middle high school, and that was unfortunately failed in Essex, so it didn't move forward. But I was involved in the second one, which is frankly the one we're sitting in right here, right now, right now, and also in the elementary school, Manchester Memorial Elementary School too. I also served on the CPC, on the Donovan Field Committee, and I am now currently as the Planning Board liaison to the Downtown Improvement Committee too. So it's been, it's been quite versatile and it was a tremendous learning experience for me to be involved, engaged in the town. So why the planning board? Why now? It's, you know, I need, I like to stay involved and so I have the same belief that my experience would benefit the town that I had, as I had when I first joined the school building committees. I do feel it still, I'm still a very technical person. I love this town, I love the building of the town and I love all the complexities of it. And I must say, I'm very happy and proud to be involved, or at least a little part of it, in building this building in the memorial. So I came on to be a member of the planning board nine months ago, unfortunately, like that. And we immediately went into the special program for self-filing technology and then also for the MBTA, very highly time-sensitive intensive project. Little did I know that that's what the planning board did. And what I did is I learned the importance of a planning board and managing the towns and land and building development is extremely quite an important role. And I learned that decisions we made have a distinct effect on the how this town functions, what it is, on the velocity of the town, how it grows. So that became very interesting to me, to be once again, to be. And also, I must say, trying to work through it, I know I was involved in development for this whole time, throughout my professional career, but maybe nature, small town attitude, preserving, preserving, it is truly quite important to me. I love it here, I enjoy it here. My kids walk to school here, probably take a better class. And I want to be part of the planning board again. I really enjoyed the experience, seven, eight months, it was pretty intense. I must admit that I came, because I was in nearby, not understanding what the intensity is, but the reality was I really did enjoy it. So upcoming issue, this is one thing I, I agree with Erica, this is another upcoming issue, where do I, where do I think it needs to happen? So I think the responsible development, as we all, as I just heard from the selection, responsible development and now best planning, responsible development. See, you can, how do you?
Yeah, and Gordon, we are, yes, just put it closer to your, to your mouth and also we are over time, just so you know, just so.
Is it on right now?
It is on, you just need to put it in closer proximity to your, as you speak.
So diverse housing opportunities, this is, this is a big one too. I've seen it in all the, all the websites and discussion and internal discussions within the planning board already. Housing is, is a big issue here. A vibrant downtown, I'm, I'm well aware of this, having joined the Downtown Improvement Committee three years ago. So that, we've been discussing many issues lately, it's becoming the downtown and making it more vibrant. And I believe, we'll talk about it a little bit later, but I believe there's initiatives that are about to happen that will actually improve the downtown, certainly, certainly investigate how to make it better. This is one of my personal ones. I'd like to monitor both the results of the MBTA zoning and the ADU, ADU housing, just to see what the impact and the additional housing that they would bring, albeit small and albeit specifically in distinct areas here. I think this is important to have an understanding by monitoring where that goes. And the last one, last one, which I think is a fundamental, fundamental role of the planning board, is to author and update the zoning bylaws as necessary to keep pace with whatever the town is doing in terms of development and whatever such. So I believe I'm probably over my time.
You're about twice over, just so you know.
Okay, there you go.
You got three minutes and you took six, but I only say that so that in, you can be generous with others as we progress with this, with this forum, so that at the end everyone will be equal. So next, why don't we hear from Sandy Bodmer Turner?
Oh yeah, okay, good. I will be briefer, I promise. When my husband and I and my daughter moved here 26 years ago, we came, we were trying to fix South Shore, North Shore, where he grew up in Arlington, I grew up in Connecticut. And we just, there was something about the way the town felt, I mean, its natural beauty is quite incredible, great schools. And there, but there was a feel to the town that was precious and obvious and it's something we heard a lot about on the MBTA Task Force, which was, you know, it's a kind of neighborly feeling, small town, people know each other, they, my favorite episode was when Zax existed, I went in to pick up something and gave the lady who ran the shop my card and she said, "Oh, are you Simone's mother? Simone is my daughter." She said, "She's a frequent shopper." So it's that sort of feel that we picked up and came for that reason. My involvement before the MBTA Task Force with the Town's Affairs was mostly to be very appreciative of the fact that the town runs to a very great degree on volunteer energy. And to some degree, I was on the edges of some of the new school things, especially because our daughter was an athlete, trying to find feels when there were no feels because of the construction here. About three or four years ago, I began to see changes in the town that made me a little uncomfortable, where modest homes were smacked down and a, and huge, you know, out to the boundaries of the property, houses were built in its place. And I thought, wow, you know, what's happening here? And then bit by bit, you know, there began to be empty storefronts and some of the vitality in the town seemed to be diminishing in a way that I didn't quite understand. In any case, because of that and because the MBTA Task Force was a planning function, I actually have a educational background in that and have done some work in planning. I raised my hand and participated in that task force and it was, I learned a tremendous amount, both from my colleagues on the task force and from the citizens who so many of you came persistently to make comments, make sure we were on the right path. And it just was a terrific learning exercise for me. And one of the things we saw, because the MBTA was something that was kind of put on us by the state, the task force's job was to make sure that mandate did not harm the town and was happened, unfolded, changed the zoning in a way that was consistent with the way development had always happened here. But one of the pieces of discussion that often happened was, well, we can't do that, we can't talk, deal with the downtown because, you know, there are all these rules that the state had about what the bylaw could be and not be. And there were, there were many instances of that. And so I decided, well, all right, so I'll throw my hat in the ring and here I am today, sitting in front of you in very bright lights, I wish I could see your faces. Anyway, that's why I'm here and I hope I can be helpful in taking the town forward and moving things in a direction where there's a great diversity of kinds of people, economic diversity that we saw when we came here. As, as Byon reminds me, we are a fishing port, among other things.
Thank you, Sandy. Brian?
Hi, I'm Brian Frye and I moved to Manchester about three years ago to be closer to family and eventually raised my own here with my wife. I was drawn in by the town's natural beauty, historic charm and sense of community like so many of you are. And I've spent much of my career leading public affairs and community planning efforts with a focus on affordable housing, smart land use and sustainable growth initiatives. I currently serve on Manchester's Bike and Pedestrian Committee where I've worked to make our streets safer and more accessible for everyone. I'm running for a planning board because I believe that Manchester is at a turning point. We face big questions around housing, growth and downtown vitality, and I want to bring a thoughtful, community-driven approach to those decisions. I'm running to offer a younger voice and a fresh perspective to the conversation grounded in real-world experience and a strong belief that good planning starts with good listening. Thank you.
Wow, you just reclaimed some time for the rest of the people, Brian, thank you. Sandy Rogers, it is your turn to introduce yourself.
Hello. Is working? Great.
Yes.
Thank you, Erica, 1623 Studios, and most importantly, all of you for attending the forum and those that will be listening in later. My name's Sandy Rogers and I've been a resident of Manchester for 35 years. And when we first came to Manchester, we were long-term renters and then became homeowners. I was drawn to Manchester just like everybody else for its beauty and its character and the availability of commuting into the city. But what has made the town the home is its sense of place and community. And that inspired both me and my family to give back. I'm currently co-chair of the Manchester Sustainability Committee. I've been on the board of the Friends of Manchester Trees, a volunteer for Manchester Essex Conservation Trust, and I volunteered for the 375th Celebration Committee. Professionally, I'm a business consultant. I am an industry research analyst and I most recently covered smart building technologies and sustainable real estate operations. And so you can see a theme here is that sustainability is important. I have had experience in project management and study and survey development and research and analysis of technical information and in communications. And I think these are essential skills for, for the planning board. And I would like to see the planning board become more effective in helping bring in the community. I mean, one of the ideas behind surveys is getting a voice of the customer and the residents of town are the customers as well as our neighbors and those that we're attracting into town for a viable business community. And would also like to bring communication capabilities and clarity to what is developed within our bylaws and communications for awareness and engagement with the community more. I feel very deeply about the environment, I love outdoor activities and we are just so lucky to live in this corner of the world, on Cape Anne, in this town, and it's walkable and it's safe and we want to keep it that way. I want to make sure that Manchester evolves. And that's a key word. We, we need to change and evolve, but we need to protect its unique assets. And that's really what's driving me to step up. Why I'm looking to serve you, as others have mentioned, we're at a critical juncture right now. We have an increasing amount of climate-related threats that we are going to have to deal with. We need to ensure housing and services are accessible for all ages and we have over a quarter of our population in the senior category. And so we need to understand what that means. We want, I would love to create and we all want to create and maintain a vibrant downtown and business-friendly atmosphere throughout all of our districts. And at the same time, the town is dealing with a lot of infrastructure upgrades. So we also have to consider the financial and economics of what we're planning and how we're balancing different development projects in a more holistic way. I believe in protecting homeowner, landowner rights, but at the same time, consider current and future impact of these changes on our neighbors in the town at large. And rather than be reactive and look at development projects one by one, get ahead of it, really do some focused planning work. And I already said that I'd like to do much more community outreach. There are a lot of projects that, what I've discovered is that the residents find out later what's going on. And I think that we can do a better job at alerting and involving more people in the community and also all of the committees and boards, government entities, we have an opportunity to work in a less siloed way and be more collaborative and share information. We have opportunities for smart growth and refurbishment and we must carefully architect that so it blends seamlessly into what our town is and where we want it to go. And I would like to aid that process. Thank you.
Wow, we've heard some really interesting perspectives and getting a taste of where we're going to go, which is awesome. Okay, so the first question, we're going to start our questions, so the first of our three questions is really designed to, Gordon and I were talking in the, before this, to essentially first orient people about the job and the role of the planning board and what it is. A lot of people are not aware of it, I certainly was not. I thought it was about, you know, deciding what was appropriate and what wasn't. And then, so I want to orient around that, but then I would like to dive into each person's personal ideas of what, where they'd like to see some impact within that specifically for Manchester. So the question is, the general one is, the planning board is charged with both enforcing and interpreting Manchester's zoning bylaw. I mean, it's really that simple. You're a judge, you're not, you're not a freelancer. So that's what the role is. People who are serving already know that, Gordon. But, so what is the single most important area, whether it's regulatory, procedural or policy-based, where the board should focus to better serve Manchester's long-term needs? So why don't we start with Sandy Bodmer Turner? I have to, I'm going to use last names for the Sandys.
And we're both Sandra J.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh gosh.
I love it.
I think, I'd actually like to talk a little bit about the definition of the planning board's job for a second, because I think it's.
Perfect.
It's pretty simple and straightforward in terms of the overarching mission. And that is, its job is to balance what happens on a particular lot with the neighbors. And so you want to make sure that we are, when any new development happens, that it's a good neighbor to what's already there. And we want to protect and of course, people's property rights, but we want to make sure that what they do with their property, what one person does with their property, doesn't create a bad neighbor. So it's a balance that has to go on, always with the planning board. I think honestly, I think there are a number of relatively new rules with the ADU and the MBTA zoning. And I think from, I think both of those efforts aid some of the things we've been talking about here in terms of affordability and welcoming younger families, providing housing that is more appropriate for seniors who would like to stay in town but really can't manage it. So those efforts are in place. So I think the number one job right now is enforcement, seeing what happens, how do those rules really work? Are they doing the job that we thought they would do? And really focusing on that.
Thank you, Sandy. Brian?
So I think this conversation starts with housing as, I mean, obviously, probably the number one issue that a lot of communities everywhere are facing. And, and that was a great point on the enforcement component for the planning board's specific role. I think right now, the planning board continuing to modernize Manchester's zoning bylaws, recent changes around overlay districts and accessory dwelling units were strong first steps, but our overall zoning framework is still rooted in a much older model. It's heavily tilted towards large, single-family lots and doesn't provide enough flexibility for the kinds of housing that communities like ours actually need, like smaller homes, duplexes or senior-friendly units. Right now, even modest proposals like converting an existing home into two units often require a special permit, which can add cost, time and uncertainty. And that can make it harder for young families, older adults and longtime residents who want to downsize but stay in our community. I think we need zoning that's more responsive to our modern needs, clearer and more predictable and supportive of thoughtful, small-scale growth in the right places. And another point here, just as importantly, I think we need to improve the process itself. That means better communication, better engagement with the public earlier on and clearer transparency. If we want people to support good planning, I think we need to bring them into the conversation early and get their input from the start.
That was very thoughtful. Gordon?
Can you hear me now? Yes, okay. So I tend to agree with, with what Brian just said and what Sandy just said as well. It's, it's a very delicate line, very delicate line to encourage development in a town, encourage expansion, encourage more, encourage more housing, and yet trying to maintain that, that vision that we all have as a small-town place. The reason why I asked Erica before of what's the difference, what was that question, what was that question meant to be? So if I may, just differentiate between policy and regulatory. The policy approach is establishing strategies and methods to address specific issues to achieve desired outcomes. And regulatory is rules and regulation, imposing rules and restrictions to ensure compliance. So in, in my personal approach, and actually through my professional career too, I much prefer the idea, my, to answer your question directly, my single most important would be a policy approach, to establish much of the, much of the items that, that Brian and Sandy just brought up here about, but to actually think it through early on, establish what that policy is before you start enacting the regulations that control it. And that is that broader, broader scope approach, I actually heard it during the Select Board interviews too, that thinking about the entire picture of where we want to go before we actually make the rules that govern how that actually happens. I should say, if I may, if I have a minute, a second more like that, almost important, almost important is this, is actually establishing that regulations to make sure that it is done in accordance with that vision that we've established right up front. I think that is equally important. My first step, and it always has been, is establishing what, what we want, what it wants to be and, and how are we going to get there and then use the regulations to actually control how it's done.
That's wonderful. Sandy Rogers?
Okay, great. So this question, I thought about it and a key element of it was long-term, that was what you were looking for. The board has had a lot on its plate and honestly, it's had to be more reactive as of late, especially with some of the mandates of state regulations and obviously have to react to big development projects. I believe that we're at a time to step back, take breath, make sure that we build in ways to assess what's working, what's not, with our bylaws and with our practices, and then proactively work to develop a plan for the town. It's time to look at revamping our master plan. The official date is 2019, but some of the studies that were done with citizens were back in 2015, 16 and, you know. back in 2015, 16, and, you know, capturing data from '17 and '18. And so here we are at the 10-year mark, and it really should be more of a type of view that we assess on a regular basis. A lot has changed since that was put into place. We've had a lot of work done already with zoning recodification. We've had the MBTA 3A overlay. We've had both standard and large ADUs put in. We have Single Place Hill 40B to consider that might be coming down the pipeline, and the self-signaling business development complex, among other things. So, and we've, and I mentioned this before, we have a lot of costly infrastructure projects, some goals around water and sewer, mitigating PFAs, et cetera, but also some development. Are we moving the DPW? What's going to happen to the different sites? What are we doing with the senior center? Are there opportunities while we're doing this to assess land use across the town and looking at it from a resiliency point of view, both economically, you know, what are we going to have to deal with, with climate encroaching? And I think that's very, very important to take that step back. Decisions on development projects need to have data and information. Like I said, we need to have more of a view of what town residents want, citizens, and work more collaboratively, but also the different committees and boards and the different studies that go on in those boards. Can we actually design those so they can be complementary if we are in the right time zone while we're putting those together? And we have to do more due diligence with looking at different options, getting all of the information together, sharing that with the public. And, you know, I can say what I would like, but I think it's important for the board to really represent what the town needs and be open and listen and give options to be determined. Explore what will work, what won't work with the experts, with, you know, legal, with the financial committee, with the conservation commission. So I think that's really important. Details matter. People have probably heard me speak up at town meeting. It's mostly to make sure that what we're developing in any of our bylaws and zoning and our considerations for special permits is that we're looking at what's most important, building that in. We might not get it always right the first time, but we need to work and evolve that. Even just the latest ADUs, the first time that we went to pass that a couple years ago, there wasn't enough built into it. But now, the work that's been done with the planning board, building in some of those guardrails to make sure that it will pass, and we're protecting those that want these as well as our neighbors to make it work for everyone. So I think that's really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, we're going to move on to downtown, and this was a big theme. We asked it in the last round with our Board of Selectmen as well. And you've all mentioned that, actually. You've all referred to this. Manchester's downtown faces ongoing struggles from retail vacancies to real estate pressures that affect mixed-use potential. Should the planning board play a role in supporting a more viable, vibrant downtown? And if so, specifically how? Brian?
The answer is yes, absolutely. A thriving downtown is the heart of a healthy community, and the planning board can play a role in shaping policies that support it. That starts with zoning that encourages mixed-use development, promotes walkability, and allows for creative use of underutilized spaces. We should also look at incentives that make it easier for small businesses to open and expand downtown. From a planning standpoint, improving pedestrian infrastructure like crosswalks, lighting, and sidewalks not only boosts safety, but it drives foot traffic that helps promote and support local business. If people feel safe and welcome walking and biking around downtown, they're more likely to shop, dine, and spend time there. Finally, I'd advocate for a planning process that works in partnership with business owners, residents, and civic groups to ensure the downtown evolves in a way that reflects community values.
Excellent. Sandy Rogers?
Actually, the planning board is just now starting to put together a program where they'll outline how they will examine the needs of the downtown, and I think it's an ideal time to coordinate that with an overall master plan review. I believe that there's a big desire to have a healthy amount of business properties, and pursuing mixed-use zoning is a viable model. I believe that there's opportunity to make better use of the space that we have with walkable and clustered storefronts. Again, this is where reactive piecemeal development will really hamper efforts if we're trying to envision what a more vibrant space would look like. We have to obviously make sure that there's safety and parking concerns taken care of. There could be a short-term hold on demolition of buildings until a viable strategy is designed. We have to, you know, once properties are changed and their uses are changed, there's no going back. Take, for example, what's happening with the Cargo Unlimited building in town. There's a lot of different thoughts. I think that we can have a mixed-use situation, and we have to really be considering the safety of what traffic and, you know, what that's doing to bring more foot traffic to multiple enterprises in that entire area. There could be a mixture, obviously, of the residential and commercial to be accommodated or mandated in the zoning. There's a lot of buildings that were developed before zoning existed, and I think that an overall view and, you know, how are we going to balance maybe development of business in the LCD and the impact of that on downtown and vice versa? How can we draw some of the activities like self-signaling down into downtown? The question is what the planning board can do. There are limitations to what the planning board could do, and I think it is important to be working with the downtown committees and the bike and ped and all of the committees to understand how best to work through this. But with the zoning, it's making sure that we're protecting those businesses that we want to keep.
That's great. Gordon, I felt like, I feel like, given your intro, this was perhaps a good segue to you.
If I can figure out how to open this up. So I must, I am thoroughly encouraged to hear that, I know that Sandy hasn't spoken yet, but I know her feelings, that we all have that same feeling about the downtown, that it is, should be a vibrant, should be a vibrant life and place. It was a bit of a challenge in the selected meeting. I heard that we have the challenges there. But actually, I'm happy to say, I'm happy to say that there is initiatives that are moving forward as we speak right now. So everything is, everything is moving forward. So if I may, just, it's a, it's a very complex blend of social, business, functional, mercantile, residential, infrastructure issues to make that downtown work. And it is, by the way, I should, should proceed as I like Brian's entry. Yes, the planning board should play an active role in the downtown. The work in downtown is a combined, should be and will be, a combined cooperative effort with all the town boards, committees, and specifically the citizens too, to participate in, to determine what it is. As I mentioned before, I joined the downtown improvement committee three years ago, three or four years ago now here, with the intent at that point, we were, we're looking at what to do with the downtown architecturally and roadway and curb design and lighting and such here. But it's evolved into much more as the downtown has continued to lose tenants and it becomes a little more vacant here. It needs a whole different consideration. So as a, as a member of the planning board, as I mentioned, I'm the liaison to the downtown improvement. So there's some initiatives. I'm actually, I'm actually happy to say, I'm hoping I'm not letting the cat out of the bag too much, but the downtown improvement committee is creating a marketing issue, a marketing issue right now. It's very much in its infancy, but the intent is to try and encourage other tenants to come into town and touting Manchester's virtues and our stable, stable population base. I think it's very exciting. Actually, on the downtown improvement meetings, it's quite, it's quite interesting to hear it all. And it's also intended to identify potential businesses that could come into town as well. Very positive. So that is initiative that's just happening. And I will say, the planning board, the planning board, to your point, Sandy, I think the planning board should be engaged, and the planning board currently is engaging an outside planning consultant to help us at least initially, initially for the current stuff, to perform an updated visioning project, a visioning plan focused on the downtown specifically. Now, this, this is, this is exactly what I think we're all speaking to. We're engaging, gauging everyone in the thought process of what the downtown might look. There is, there is a, there is a future plan that would have to happen to actually implement it, but this is intended to identify a long-term plan. And I will say that also, there's a long-term study that our town planner is about to undergo, perhaps about to undergo, as to what to do with the entire downtown district, downtown everything. So it's, and that would, that would include architecturally, physically, lighting-wise, business-wise, and everything else. So I think the idea of creating a vibrant downtown is actually on the minds. I know that in our planning board meetings at the first of the year, there was, last year was a pretty heavy year, a lot of decisions made here. This year, there, there was that moment of, let's step back, let's now look at a true planning effort for the coming year. So the role of the planning board, if I just still, just go quickly through it, is active engagement in the visioning and the planning process. I think we are, are, and will continue to be, that's clearly on our agenda, and draft new or modify existing zoning bylaws to reflect those changes, to stay current with whatever the zoning plans are. And that would be it.
Thank you. Sandy Bodmer Turner?
Erica, this was my favorite question of the three.
I have to say, as I've watched this issue emerge over the last, I mean, I've watched it for a very, very long time, it's amazing to me how this is the unifier. This is the unifying topic, no matter who you are and the full spectrum of beliefs, people care about the downtown.
They do. I mean, because it's the heart of the downtown.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, it is the, it is where people come together and where things happen, all kinds of things. So I think certainly the planning board has a role in this. And I think it starts in a very straightforward way, basically, doing a close examination of what all the existing rules are that govern development in the downtown. I mean, I frankly, until I was on the task force and looked carefully at the rules, the zoning rules of the town, the bylaws, I mean, we allow single-family zoning, so the downtown could turn into a bunch of single-family homes. And I, so close examination of the rules is one, and trying to see, are they consistent with the goals that we want for the town? I think then to both something that Brian said earlier and Gordon underlined as well, is this whole process of visioning. So what's the goal? What do citizens really want? When you go down to the, the devil of these things is in the details. And good planning, it's a great thing to say, Brian and I couldn't agree more, is about good listening. And so there's a whole process of learn, really hearing what people have to say about what would they like, shops, offices, restaurants, you know? Let's have it discussed. Let's have it explored. And then getting a better, there is a, there is a need for study to try and understand what draws people to the downtown. There's often very, I think the only discussion that is more fraught in town than dogs on the beach is parking downtown. So it's like, okay, so let's, what is it that brings people? Is it parking? I mean, people go to a mall, they park their car, they walk for a mile to go to a shop? Or is it really the density of options that they have to do all kinds of different activities? And I would add one other thing sort of layered over it. I think the devil is in the details, study is important, being thoughtful, careful. But I think timing is really important, and I certainly have a sense of urgency about it. Watching property is privately owned. The person who sold Cargo Unlimited had full rights to do that. And were we prepared to deal with what that property will become and how it will affect the downtown? Hmm, I don't know. So I feel a sense of urgency about all of that. Anyway, I'm pretty confident we can pull it off, but I think we need to get cracking on it.
That's an excellent answer. It's interesting, I've been listening to you all, and what I'm hearing is a real interest in kind of gravitating and pulling towards the policy part of things, and then also at the same time, taking a holistic, large, interactive, I mean, interrelated approach to accomplishing goals that are articulated in the long run. I've heard that from everybody. Now, I have one last question to ask, but I'm gonna, we're running late on time, and what I'm going to suggest is, because I heard you, I'm going to guess that your answer to the next question will be kind of what I just said. And I will share with you what the question is, and then what I'm going to do is just turn it over to you. If one of you wants to ask about affordable housing or senior housing, feel free, and they will have prepared answers. But what I'm going to do is just going to tell you what the question was, and then I think I'd rather just pivot to questions from the audience, if that's okay with you. What I was going to ask was, Manchester's aging population and the lack of affordable housing continues to be a persistent challenge. And by the way, that is by no means unique to Manchester. It is, and it's, it's everywhere. What concrete steps, zoning changes, partnerships, incentives would the planning board, should the planning board take to support housing that meets the needs of seniors and lower-income residents? That's a very, very important question. I have a feeling a lot of the answer will be policy-oriented, long-term planning, interrelated, you know, sort of a partnership approach, et cetera. So what I'd like to do is, if anybody wants to ask that question, please just say, I want to hear about that senior housing thing or the affordable housing thing. And instead, what I'm going to do is just pivot to the questions. Is that okay from the audience?
May I, may I just interject something?
Oh, yes, of course.
So I agree, I agree. We're all probably going to have the very similar answers to this thing. But one thing about this, I am by no means a housing expert. This is, this is the challenge. I listened to Kathy talking about it before, about the financial arrangements and the recording. It's very, very challenging here. But what I was able to distill after reading, reading this and underlining, and this is, this is a great document. This is the housing production plan, and these are housing strategies. It's a terrific document, and it lays out, it lays out the plan that we should be following. So I read it all. What I gleaned from it, on a positive note, that the ADUs and the MBTA, MBTA zoning here actually help us a bit by giving, giving the citizens the ability to build, build more housing units within the town that hopefully will alleviate some of the problem here. But one thing, I'll be very short. The one thing that I did pick up on here, and then what I would do, and after reviewing, looking at the public housing around here, I tended, I forget who said it before in the select board, but the housing we have here is in a pretty deplorable state. It's functional, yes, it's effective, but we own that land, and I have a feeling that rather than finding new parcels, new parcels, or perhaps in addition to finding new parcels for new development, that repairing and refurbishing and updating our current inventory inventory would be a far better approach. Am I sure how to use it?
I think I just disconnected it when I did this. So would anybody like to answer the question since Gordon just answered it? So you can take turns, and then I'll figure this out.
I'll answer part of it. I think that there's a lot to be said about stepping back and seeing how the ADUs might help with some affordability, even though it's not mandated, and what might be happening with other development going on. I just want to make a comment regarding seniors. I'm a true believer in multi-generational types of communities and not siloing anyone based on affordability, based on age. And I think that there was a foray into being able to affect through zoning the ability to have senior housing, and we have to be very careful about what is a commercial senior complex versus what might be a more livable, integrated into town, whether it's 55-plus type of community, but truly multi-generational. And, you know, this is near and dear to my heart. I know I and many people in town want to age in place and be vitally connected and, like, thinking about, oh, we could put something out into the LCD or something like that. That might be a commercial type of entity, but not necessarily what we really want to think about. And seniors are vital a lot longer now, and we want that to happen. So it's, it's definitely something I'm paying close attention to. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian or Sandy, do you?
Sure, I'll go ahead. Manchester can't afford to leave people behind. Sandy just spoke about seniors. One-third of our residents, I believe, I heard that, are seniors. And to support seniors and low-income residents, not just low-income, but moderate-income residents as well, because housing is now so expensive, we need to take meaningful, concrete action. We need to, like Gordon said, inventory what we already own as a first step. But we can't take too long, because these things take a long time to play out. So we need to get started, hit the ground running when we can. That could be permitting larger ADUs by right potentially. That could be supporting duplexes, triplexes where appropriate. That could mean incentivizing age-friendly and accessible design. We need to foster more partnerships. I know there are a lot in the process already, as Gordon said, with nonprofit developers, regional housing trusts, and organizations that specialize in senior or affordable housing. And the planning board can help guide these efforts by streamlining the review process for mission-aligned developments and encouraging mixed income housing that really fits our village scale. Housing is about community, and whether you're just aging, whether you're aging in place or just starting out, or just simply want to stay in the town you love, we need policies that reflect the reality and ensure Manchester, Manchester remains inclusive, resilient, and welcoming to all.
That was great, Brian. Sandy Bodmer Turner.
Well, this was not my favorite question, because I think we've already taken some steps in that direction. I do, there, there are two comments I have about it. One is that I think people talk about affordable housing and think about low-income housing, and what we're talking about really, if you look at the income requirements for capital A, affordable housing, basically beginning teacher salaries, it, our teachers, our emergency responders, people who are part of the community and upon whom we depend can no longer afford to live here. And so affordable, both small A and capital A, kind of meet, given, what is, I think 80% of AMI is a $130,000 some odd annual salary for a family of four. So if you look at keeping people in town and making it possible for young families, so many people who grew up here want to come back, they can't. So the other way I look at it is, I hope that we can change the rules so that when someone decides to sell their property and they sell it to a developer, that that developer can look at that and say, well, okay, I could build a three-family unit here just as effectively and profitably as I could build a large single-family home. And those three units will be hopefully less expensive than the one very large house. And that's the kind of change I would like to see happen as we proceed to deal with ADUs and MBTA zoning. Just one other comment on the ADUs. I think everybody should remember, to Sandy's comment, for all the, the people who want to remain in place as opposed to be closeted off by themselves with a bunch of older people without their grandchildren. I, I think the ADU, the former name of ADU was a granny flat. So it's like, we need not to forget about that.
Okay, we're gonna take a question from the audience now.
Hi, Isabella Bates. I think the big elephant in the room is the ocean. We love to be by the seaside, but it is rising. And I've not heard any future planning about the fact that Manchester's going to be flooded. I had this great sense of relief when they did the charrette about Masconomo Park. They said by 2035, it would be flooded at every high tide. And by 2050, it would be permanently underwater. That was the projection that they came up with. And they came up with a design that encompassed that. And there was a kind of sense of relief in me that, okay, the ocean's gonna rise, and we need to plan for it, you know? And it may mean that, you know, things have to be drastically moved. And that's a planning board issue, it seems to me, is it not?
Would anybody like to take that?
Just, you know, that echoes what I said at the beginning. I think that having an overall view of all of the land within town, assessing with the Conservation Commission regarding wetlands, looking at the studies that have already been done by the town, and pursuing future studies, and being involved in understanding how that will impact the zoning, the developability of particular areas of town. There are pockets of wetlands, there are streams that are rising, and we have to be cognizant of that. We're a small town, we don't have a lot of land. I know that there's a, you know, a faction of people that think that we can keep developing, and obviously, we've kept it at a pretty slow pace because of that issue. We need to look at what land we actually have to work with and think about how that's going to impact our traffic patterns, our safety, and downtown in particular, how it's going to look for parking in town if part of Beach Street is going to be flooded. That's the long-term view, so having a short-term and long-term view is important.
Great. Anybody else have a question?
Could I respond to Isabella's comment?
Of course.
I think you've touched on an issue that needs to be pervasive as we look at, for example, all the rules that affect the downtown, what's gonna happen with climate change, where the boundaries are, what people expect to happen. All of that needs to be pervasive and part of every consideration about what the new rules should be.
Well said. Okay, well, given that we don't have any more questions, I just want to say thank you to everybody, first of all, and then before we sort of say goodbye, I'd love to give you an opportunity to sort of say any last thoughts or anything, and we can start with you, Sandy, and go right down to Gordon, if that's okay, just, and thank you for...
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Erica, thank you, everybody. I think that one area that we haven't touched upon that is related to climate is something that our bylaws need to look at, clearcutting and the destruction of land and property. And we've built some new bylaws regarding site review, and I think we need to get ahead of it. This is part of that proactive nature of looking at not only our overall plan, our overall land, and in looking at what is going to protect our town, the viability of our town, the nature of our town. And this is something that will take a coordinated effort. I am actually looking very forward to working with a new town administrator and seeing some of the energy in many of the boards and committees. I, I think there's gonna be a concerted effort to, to make a difference. Again, be less reactionary, be more proactive, and create a great future for Manchester.
Thank you, Sandy. Brian, you're next. You're up.
All right. I've really enjoyed the past three years getting involved with the town on the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, learning about the town's issue, talking with folks about their priorities and needs, and helping educate and communicate with the community through producing some content around safety issues regarding pedestrian infrastructure and biking. I just want to close in saying that I'm committed to showing up, doing the work, and most of all, I'm here to listen, because it's all of you who really make this whole thing happen and who the planning board is here to serve. Thank you.
Sandy.
Is that better? Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Erica, and thank you to all of you for coming. I have such a sense of so many issues that were raised in the context of the MBTA zoning that needed to be put aside to get to the goal of making the zoning by the time, et cetera. And I very much would like to, I have such a feeling of urgency to begin to address some of those issues. And I hope that my perspective as an entrepreneur and just a citizen who wants to listen and make the town proceed in a way that's consistent with its history, that keeps what's precious about it in place. I, I hope I have an opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Gordon. Bring it home for us.
Did I get it this time? So I have to admit something. When I first came on the planning board as an interim member about nine, 10 months ago here, I too didn't understand exactly what a planning board did. I have, I've appeared before planning boards at projects where I was a proponent, but I haven't been on this side of it here. And I must admit, I am, I am thoroughly impressed with the job that has been done and the organization of the planning board as we currently have it. This is not to deny that we've just identified a whole bunch of issues that still have to be addressed, but I am very, I'm very, very positive for the future of how the planning board will, will address all of these issues. So it's, it's a, and if I, if I may, just take a perspective back for, for my 25 years on it. The downtown, when we had the old middle school, high school, when we had the old memorial school, and the roadway system and the sidewalks and everything, that, that all has been so dramatically improved since, since that time. So I am quite positive that the issues we've raised and, and what I know and understand the planning board is about to do with, for the future here, these issues will be addressed. They will be addressed, and it will be a cooperative, cooperative as well with other town boards and with other, like the Downtown Improvement Committee. So I am, I am looking, I know we're talking a little bit dour of things that need to happen here, but I am actually looking quite positively for what has been done and what I know will be done in the future. And I'm actually looking forward to being part of it.
It didn't feel dour to me, Gordon. So thank you very much. Thank you for attending, thank you for listening, and most of all, thank you to the candidates for showing up, for being prepared, and for giving us really, really thoughtful answers about, you know, really, really interesting and challenging topics. So thank you very much. All righty, thank you, guys. Have a good night.